Okay, we're gonna start to gather here pretty soon. Hi, everyone. We're getting close to six o'clock. Okay, good to see everyone. Wait for our council member to go yet to return. Okay. So it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting of the city council town of Atherton. Regular set meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And this meeting is being held virtually. Anthony, can we say the pledge of allegiance?
Certainly can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic.
The which is saying one nation under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Anthony, for having your flag for us. I'll ask you to do the roll call, please.
Certainly, council member Hawkins.
Here.
The goal, yeah.
Yes.
Council member Widmer.
Yep.
Note that Vice Mayor Lempers has an excused absence and Mayor Lewis.
I'm here. Yes, thank you so much. We do have a couple of presentations that are on our agenda today and hopefully everyone has been able to through from their agenda packet either in your printed form or online. I will summarize in the interest of time. And the first one is recognizing May 2021 as Mental Health Month. And this is to recognize that so many of our community suffers from mental health issues and it affects one in four adults in the United States and that the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Mateo has designated this month of 20, May 2021 as Mental Health Month. And focuses on the theme of hashtag hope for change, which would remind us to spread hope and rely on the hope that carried us through a very, very challenging and difficult year in 2020. They San Mateo County Mental Health Planning Committee and Partners have organized over 31 free virtual events that feature open mic, music, art, films, pet, children's stories and speaker panels and more. So in be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors has designated the month of May 2021 is Mental Health Month. And the town of Atherton hereby makes this proclamation.
And air, I do believe that we have Chris Ramsay. Just pronounce your name. So I'll just give you the floor if he might want.
Yes, would you like to make a comment, please?
Sure. Thank you for having me. My name is Chris Rasmussen. And I'm a commissioner with the San Mateo County Mental Health and Substance Abuse Recovery Commission. On behalf of the commission and the Mental Health Planning Committee, thank you for recognizing May 2021 as Mental Health Month. This month is one of the best times of the year to increase awareness and inspire action to reduce stigma against those facing mental health and substance use issues. One of the things you can do to help support Mental Health Month is I urge you all to talk openly about mental health issues. The importance of talking openly about mental health issues is very important. And we can use this month to do just that. Ultimately, I'd like to say that during this month, I want to remind everybody that mental illnesses are real. Recovery is possible and it is possible to find balance between life's ups and downs and continue to hope for change with the challenges brought on by the pandemic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris, for being here. Any other members of the public wish to make a comment? About this? Seeing that, I'll move on to our second proclamation is recognizing June 2021 as Pride Month. And whereas the city council of the town of Atherton recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2021 is lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and queer LGBTQ Pride Month throughout the town of Atherton. And where as we join the County of San Mateo to observe Pride Month with a pride flag raising ceremony to honor the history of the LGBTQ liberation movement and to support the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And that the town of Atherton is committed to supporting visibility, dignity and equality for LGBTQ people in our diverse community. And it goes on that we talk about every individual has infinite dignity and worth. And the city council calls upon the people of this municipality to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice wherever it exists. So we celebrate June 2021 as Pride Month. And therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby proclaims the month June 2021 is Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ community. In witness, I have set my hand as mayor of Atherton. So do we have any members of the public who'd like to make a comment or?
We do have Chris Sturkin who's here to accept the proclamation.
Hi, Chris. How are you? Nice to see you.
Great to see you all as well. Thank you so, so much. Yeah, for those of you who may not know me, Chris Sturkin, I'm a member of the County of San Mateo's LGBTQ plus Commission. And we just wanted to thank each of you on the city council for proclaiming June as Pride Month. And thank you, Deputy Man, City Manager and City Clerk, Anthony Suber for your work in getting this agendized as well. But I would just like to, you know, share a few brief thoughts. So on behalf of the commission, we'd like to thank you again for proclaiming June as Pride Month. You are joining a movement of inclusion and visibility that ultimately impacts LGBTQ plus residents here and throughout the county. And, you know, since late March, the commission invited cities to recognize Pride Month in a variety of ways that best fits their communities. And during this time of social distancing, simple acts of visibility such as this really do create a deeper sense of connection and inclusion for everyone in the community. And so thank you so much for supporting LGBTQ plus history, visibility and inclusion. And should any residents in Atherton want to take part in any pride activities? The we encourage residents to participate in the San Mateo County Pride Celebration happening from June 6th through the 12th. And it's really easy to learn more about that simply by visiting smcpridecelebration.com. And we do have a vacancy, by the way, on the commission that we'd like to let people in the community know about in case anyone is interested in applying. So thank you again for your support. This is history. You are making history. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for your comments. Any other member of the public like to make a comment about this proclamation? This topic?
Mayor, I just want to acknowledge that we also received one written public comment that was distributed to the council directly and posted online in reference to the Mental Health Awareness Proclamation.
Great. Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. As you know, all of our council documents, agenda items, backup and public comments are always available for review. It's online at our town's website. So.
I believe you also have a raised hand.
And we have a raised hand. I don't see who it is. Who is that?
Oh, my name is Leela Anders. My pronouns are they, them, theirs. And I'm also a member of the San Mateo County LGBTQ Commission. And again, I just, as Chris did, I just want to extend my thanks to all of you for for exactly joining really the effort across San Mateo County to really let our LGBTQ community know that they are seen and they are valued in the community. So once again, thank you so much. Very appreciated.
All right. Thank you. Okay. All right. Anthony, this is the time that I'm going to open it up for public comments in general, and I'm going to let you kind of give us the instructions on how to do that.
Certainly. So for anyone joining the meeting, if you'd like to make a public comment, you're welcome to do so in a few ways. If you're joining by the link, you can click the participants button on the bottom of your screen and use the raise your hand and myself or the mayor and sometimes other members of our community will help recognize you and make sure you have an opportunity to make a comment. You can also send a direct message in our chat. And that's easy. If you're dialing in by phone, you can dial star nine on your receiver and that will raise your hand. And I don't have anything at this moment, Mayor. There are a few for item 14 though, so.
Get to them when we get to that one. Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. And I'll ask our city attorney to report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. The city council did meet in closed session on labor negotiations and the city manager's evaluation direction was given, but no further reportable action.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and item number six is our city manager's written report. George, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't have anything to add specifically. Happy to answer any questions the council may have. Before you move on to the consent agenda, though, I do have a couple of comments on that.
Okay, yes, I was also gonna note that you were going to do that. So any members of the public have any comments on the city manager's report and item number six? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. And just a reminder that consent calendar items are routine in nature and generally considered in one motion and adopted by a single vote of the city council. If there's discussion regarding the consent calendar item is desired, the member or members of the city council, public and or staff wishing to pull the items, did so indicate at this time. And these items are items number seven through 13. And city manager does have some amendments to a couple of them, I believe, number seven and number 13, actually. City manager?
Actually, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. That's actually number 10. Number 10 is the award of contract for the Hobart Palmer Park turnaround. We're reducing the contingency for this item from its listed 7,000 down to 4,000. So that would be part of the amended recommendation for approval. And then on item number 12, it's currently recommended with a four-year agreement with a one-year renewal. However, after some preliminary discussion, staff recommending a change to the term to a two-year agreement with a two-year renewal and then followed by another one-year renewal. That's the same five-year terms, but it does provide us an opportunity at year two as an opener to really look at and evaluate the level of services provided with the implementation of the Newtown Center. And those are the only two items with modifications.
Okay, given those modifications, and I apologize, I was looking at the wrong numbers of its item number 10, the award of contract for Hobart Palmer Park turnaround project. The amount, the contingency being reduced from 7,000, which is in the report to 4,000. And then the interwest agreement renewal term being amendment. Does any member of the council have any comments on these two changes? No? Okay. Does any member of the public want to make a comment on any of the consent calendar items number seven through 13? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Can I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar items number seven through 13 with the fore stated revisions that city manager made for items 10 and 12?
Yeah. So moved.
Council member Widmer made a motion to have a second.
Second.
Diana will make the second. Council member Hawkins Manuelian made the second. Any questions, comments? And all in favor, I guess we're gonna have to have a roll call vote for this, Anthony.
Yes, ma'am. Council member Hawkins.
Hi.
The goal, yeah.
Yes.
Widmer.
Yes.
And Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Thank you.
Approved. So we're going to move on to items 14 through 19 in our regular agenda. And the first one on the regular agenda calendar is the Town Center Project Update. Feedback and direction on the screening of the Corporation Yard. Feedback and direction on the City Hall Fountain Selection. An approval of removal of tree number 109 and the potential remover of tree number 110. So I will take those in order, one at a time. And so the first is going to be feedback and direction on the screening of the Corporation Yard. And I'm going to turn that over to George.
Yes, I have the preliminary high level report and then we also have Marty Hanneman on the line as well as Ben Waldo from SWA, who will give the PowerPoint presentation on the Corporation Yard proposal for changes. The, the information you have in here, all staff's looking for is some feedback and direction on which alternative to pursue. We would still need to go back to Amaroso and get an estimate of costs. We don't anticipate that the landscaping adjustments, however they turn out, will be significant because we're just changing out some proposals for what's already there. The larger change would be to the fence if the council opts to modify the fence material as well as change its location. So we're just looking for that feedback in terms of which alternative. I know there's a number of residents here this evening that are supportive of doing something there to screen the courtyard. It's an incredible change from what it used to be. Well screened by the ivy and the trees that were there. So that's the first item, Madam Mayor, if you want to take that.
I would like to take this one topic and discuss that and then move on to the next ones. But so any member of the saving?
We can have Ben go through the PowerPoint presentation.
Yes.
Three alternatives, if you would like.
Um, yes, that would be good and a nice refresher.
And? Would you like me to share my screen or will somebody from the town be pulling up the PowerPoint I shared earlier?
I'm happy to do it unless you, it's your, it's your call, sir.
I can, I can pull it up, might be.
Yeah, then you can drive it.
Yep. Can you see PowerPoint on my screen?
I can see it.
Great. Thank you all for, for having me this evening. Some of you have probably already seen some of this, a few, few updates from when we met on Maple Lane. Minor updates, kind of incorporating comments from the community. And then personally, this will be new. So kind of to take a step back context, we had designed some, some planting to screen the courtyard, which you can see back here. So me, can I see my, my cursor all right?
Yes.
And, and this is part of sort of a larger native planting garden palette that will exist in the new civic center site. So what, what we had proposed was some Metallica poppies and carpentaria, which are, you know, maybe a little higher than head height. Native perennials to sort of screen this area. But you know, previously before construction started, there were tall trees and vines here. So a number of the residents have noted that they, they didn't even realize that there was a structure back here as part of the courtyard until construction began. So what we're trying to do is revise the planting design to kind of in a perhaps more intentional way, get back to the level of screening that we used to have. So this is what was proposed in the design. And we're going to go through a few alternate proposals that would, would modify that proposed design to, to screen this structure a little bit more. Site context, this is kind of the area we're looking at Maple Lane here. New library down here. This is the courtyard structure. And so we're sort of focusing on this area highlighted in green. Proposed oak tree here. That will remain in most of the proposals we'll look at momentarily. The first of these alternates is pretty simple, keeps, keeps the driveway in the same location with a hedge. We're proposing Pacific Wax Myrtle. It's a native hedgeable plant, kind of a bulletproof. But bird friendly screening plant that'll grow to 20 feet in five years. It's very fast growing. It's very appropriate for this condition. And it could be kept kind of a little bit more natural looking or hedged if that's the preference. I'm also just as context showing in the corner here, a big leaf maple as a, that was one option that came up as an alternate to the oak. Another native large tree and this being Maple Lane. Seems like appropriate to at least suggest that the main kind of cost driver in this and the, in the following proposals is the addition of a gate here to kind of further screen that where we can't have planting. Our understanding is that we do need to keep driveway access through here. So we can't just kind of plant all the way across it. So some kind of gate would be a way to screen where that driveway exists. And we would propose a wood and steel rolling gate as kind of the, the best option for this location. That would just kind of tuck away behind this hedge when it's open. But most of the time it will be closed and you'd have kind of a warm natural material that wouldn't be too offensive to the eye. So to look at how that lays out in plan. Just kind of diagramatically, the hedge shouldn't hear in dark green. And gate here that was tucked in behind this fence.
So can, can I interrupt you real quickly here?
Please do, yeah.
Yes. So the, the hedge is in the dark green and then there is a lighter color green that, yes, skirts it. Now that, as I understand, can also be planted. So there's layering, the possibility of layering your landscaping in that. But if you go back to your visual picture, I don't see where that is, especially if you've got your street going in behind this white shrub, white flowers shrub. I don't see where that light green skirt is.
Oh, she's talking about further down towards the civic center.
Ben, Ben, you're on mute. Sorry.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Yeah, so we, we could, I, I think the rendering is maybe slightly inconsistent with the, the plan diagram here. The hedge could be yeah, behind kind of some layered, layered planting. We have room back here to to put one in front of the other.
I'm, what about over where the yellow dot is? Yeah. So I think what you've got showing on your picture image is the hedge kind of all, all the way out to the front of that skirt on the front of the skirt rather than the edge. Anyway, it's, it just doesn't jive in my eye, but.
Sure, we, we can update that and send that over to, to show a little bit more planting layering in the view.
Okay, well, that's, that's not.
So, so the second alternative has the, the essentially the same strategy, same planting with gate, but the main difference is that the gate shifts north to kind of align with the railroad tracks. And what that does is it sort of further puts that out of view from the homes on the east side of the street. Where I think a lot of the the alarm about this kind of big ugly structure has come from. So that just kind of further pushes that, that view out of, out of the way. And maintains driveway access. It's still about the same amount of planting. It's just kind of shifting it around a little bit. So in, in plan.
And it also aligns the gate more with station lane versus maple intersection.
That's right.
In, in this diagram, it really looks more straight on from station lane. In their picture diagram, it, it, it does, it doesn't read to me as if it's, and I think it's just because of the perspective of the picture, you know?
Yeah, I think it's a slightly odd perspective to be looking at this and
Right.
You know? I think if we were to, to model this in 3D, get a little bit more precise, but we've just been kind of working off some photos that, that Marty sent us. So I apologize if anything looks you know, not, not quite perfect. Just trying to get the, the general gist of it here of, of you know, the, the main point, right, is that you're not, not going to see the, the courtyard buildings behind. This is less of a landscape to look at and more of a landscape to kind of let, let what's behind it disappear a little bit.
Okay.
So the, the final alternate, and this, this was based on a planting recommendation from one of the community members who attended the neighborhood meeting last month is rather than the Pacific Wax Myrtle, we use a little gem magnolia, which is a smaller variety of, of a typical southern magnolia, of course, about 20 feet and kind of keeps the form that you see here. Almost a sort of Cypress-like form. And so, you know, that would be certainly an effective evergreen screen to cover the courtyard. And in this case, rather than keeping the oak on the north side, I would propose moving it to the south side. Just because the water requirements are a little bit different for the magnolia and the oak. Magnolia would need a little bit more water and we don't want to sort of saturate the, the oak roots. So you know, we don't want to lose the oak. So we might just move it to the other, other side of the, the driveway in the foreground here.
Then I think that one of our council members would like to make a comment.
Yeah, please do.
Yeah. So the question is, you know, obviously we're going to plant something that's somewhat sizable, but how fast are these growing? Yeah, so the question is, you know, obviously we're going to plant something that's somewhat sizable, but how fast are these growing to where they'll look like this?
So, great, great question. The magnolia is kind of a moderate. Grower, they're not super fast in, in this climate at least. So I think to get that. From any members was to have. At le- at least fifteen feet of. Of height for screening. I think it would probably take. Seven to ten years to get to the kind of fifteen to twenty feet height. The Pacific Myrtle, the hedging. Plant that we looked at earlier, that will. Grow quite a bit faster. My, my experience with it is that it'll get to about twenty feet in.
You broke up, you broke up. Can you say that, that years again?
The fir- the first year you won't, you won't have an instant.
Breaking up.
Very good.
Ben, you're still, you're still breaking up. I think you said that the Pacific Wax Myrtle is about a five year and the other is more like seven to ten.
No, I'm, anyway, let's, let's continue.
Okay, thank you.
The planting material is, is gonna come discussion later. This is a good visual and I see you've kind of layered it. In the front on this one.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah. So you might expect what you see in the front on this, on some of the other ones as well.
I'm not sure. Anyway, that's, that's for, that, let's, let's decide about, go on. This is alternate three. Okay? Right?
It was only three.
Yeah, that's alternate three. And then if you look at site plan, let's just look at the site plan.
That's a question.
Yes, yes, of course.
I have, I have a question. In alternative two. Where you show the hedge and you show the maple. It looks like it's just be- behind the hedge. In the planting area that you identify the maple with the circle and, and you state that that could be an oak. Rather than a maple. Could that be a valley oak?
It could. Apologize, I was having some computer issues. I hope you can hear me better now. It could be, it could be a valley oak, it could be a coastal live oak. That's what's currently proposed. It could be a big leaf maple. There's, there's a number of, of great valley oaks and coastal oaks on the site.
Okay, that's my question.
Ben, does that conclude your presentation?
Essentially, I, you know, just looking a little bit more at, at the planting here. Some pho- photos of that in real, real life, just for, this is what was previously proposed on the left. This is the Pacific Wax Myrtle here in the. Center right and the magnolia little gem, the far right. Not shown in a hedged condition, but you could plant those. Fairly close together to, to get that look. So just, just some kind of information about those reference and then. Some character images, just, you know, with, without getting too much into the details of what the fence would be. This is sort of the. The kind of attitude that we imagine something simple and. You know, not, not too decorative, but also. We don't want it to look kind of industrial and, and corpiaity. Wants to be at le- at least somewhat aesthetically pleasing.
And just for clarity, we're only looking at this type of fence for the gate portion of this. Everything behind the hedge would be chain link.
Great.
So I have any more questions?
I have a question.
I think we lost the, the mayor though. Do we have a moderator to step up from the council?
Sure. Who, who, who do we have Anthony for questions?
We have Ms. Goodman who has a question.
Okay, Ms. Goodman, you have the floor, three minutes, please.
All right. Well, I won't, I won't require that many minutes, but in the third rendition. With the magnolia little gems, is the gate to the courtyard. Closer to the railroad tracks like in, in the second alternative?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, you know, it's kind of, it, you can mix and match if, if we wanted. The magnolias, but it wasn't feasible to move the driveway. You could do that. It's, it's not a problem.
Okay. And then, because I do like the, the fence closer to the railroad tracks, but I was wondering, were we going to have two large trees? So there. Would we still, would we be able to put an oak in the foreground of that picture and then in the back put the maple with. Around the magnolias?
Yeah, we can explore that as, as an option, certainly.
Okay.
I don't see any other hands raised. Does anybody else have a question?
Uh, council member Widmer, we have Julian. Julie Quinlan.
Okay, Julie, three minutes, please.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, thanks.
I think what I have is more of a comment. First of all, I want to say, I think Ben hit it right on the head when he said the goal is to get back to the level of screening we used to have. I appreciate that. I think that option two is the one that for me would make the most sense. I think the magnolia is beautiful. I'm a little concerned about the additional water needs and the fact that it doesn't grow as quickly. I think from a long-term perspective, it might just be in, the wax myrtle might be an easier plant for the town to deal with. In terms of the tree, as Councilman DeGolia mentioned, is it, you know, the maple versus the valley oak, I actually. Think I would prefer something if possible that is not deciduous, that's evergreen, because again, you know, you get more of a. Bang for your buck in terms of screening and the coastal live oak and the big leaf maples are both deciduous. So. That would be my preference for that. And of course, the big thing, obviously, the most wonderful thing is shifting the driveway. So that it's more in keeping in line with station lane. I think that's a great idea. I know this is going to have some cost and I would urge you to look at, I know there's the two options that we were told when we had the meeting on site. For the gate. And I believe the redwood is less expensive than the other one and they look exactly the same. And I think that might be a good thing to just off the bat. Look at as a way to try to save some money and make this, make this work. And that's all I have to say. I thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, then we'll. Key. Okay, Alex, three minutes.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Widmer. So also wanted to thank Marty, staff council and SWA for. Setting up this item and meeting with the, the neighborhood. I'm in favor of alternative two and the Pacific Wax Myrtle looks great. And it would have the same amount, about the same amount of, maybe not quite the same amount, but a good deal of, of screening as compared to. What things were like a couple of years ago. And it would benefit not only our neighborhood. In terms of the immediate neighbors, but also the library and the town center, really creating a park-like atmosphere for everyone who comes to. The area, you know, because, you know, people don't really come there to. Look at the courtyard. They come there to enjoy that what is, will be a new park rather than a former parking lot. And they would like to see kind of a lot of the, the vegetation around and whatnot to enjoy the park. I, I think also one of the public comments. Before we used to have, alternative two used to be more like alternative three. So that might, that may end up. Having some confusion with Mr. Walker's comment. I noticed that he had, had made that, but I also like the fact that we have. A tree in the southwest corner. I like that idea as well as near the courtyard. So I wouldn't mind if. You know, there, there was a tree planted in, in both areas just to help improve with the screening. And last point is the, the courtyard, if, if there's an idea to, you know, paint it to better blend in with the. With the area, that would be great. That's all. Thank you.
I'm back, everyone. I know you missed me, but I am never going to give up.
You've got one, one more comment. Samo, Michael.
Yes.
Good. Hi, I have just two points. The first is that I'm with Julie on the dist- that we shouldn't have a deciduous tree or trees there. So I'm, my understanding that live oak is green all year.
And live, live oak is, is evergreen and, and valley oak is deciduous.
Right. So we should have a live oak or another evergreen tree there. And my second point is. What? It, the gate should be at the location that the corp yard employees. Think is the best for them to enter in. I'm not really of the opinion either way where the gate is. It's fine with me and I live across the street. So I guess, I guess because I'll see it either way. And, and my last point is I do like the hedging plants instead of the. The gem plants. That's it. Thank you.
Mayor Lewis, there's nobody else that has a hand raised. That's not, except for our council members. But I also would like to note that there was one written public comment received from Daniel Walker that was shared with council and posted online for public review. We may have lost the mayor again, so.
So then we had some. Michelle, Michelle's iPad.
Yeah.
So we'll take that.
Hi, I'm sorry. I, I tried to type in a comment, but I just wanted to also thank you for being so considerate to the neighborhood. I like alternate two. I think it looks great. Really happy with that. And I think moving the gate will make a big difference. So I do think having it closer to the railroad tracks will make it look. Better from almost every angle. Also agree, evergreens I think make the most sense. And I think the gate design looks great. So thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
So Rick had his hand up first for council comments. We'll close public comments and we'll go to council. Discussion. So Rick.
Okay, I have a couple of comments. First, I, I am very familiar with the little gem magnolias. They grow definitely slower than the proposed hedge and they shed. A large number of leaves. So they're, they're frankly. A maintenance problem if you're focused on having to pick up the leaves that end up on the ground all the time. I have one and I, I think the hedge will be much better for screening. I think that the position of the gate, either gate is going to work for the employees and the one closest to the railroad tracks is the best gate. Because it. It is more direct on station lane versus maple and it's less visible. To the residences on maple. I, I think it's the better solution. With, with, with respect to the trees, I think that Ben said there was a possibility for two trees. Frankly, I don't think either of the trees are going to be big screening. Items. The screen is really going to come from the hedge. The tree is going to grow very slowly. And even if we get in a large tree to begin with, it's not going to be. Anything like the pictures show. The pictures show mature trees. And we're going to bring in, you know, with twenty four to forty eight box tree. At some size that will be much smaller than the pictures show. We have been trying to. Increase the number of valley oaks because they're such spectacular trees. We've lost a couple because of. The climate and, and their positions in the civic center. So if we can have two trees here, I think we should definitely have one be a valley oak. And it's not, it, it sounded like Ben said two trees was possible. It looks like one tree is behind the hedge, close to the. Corp yard structure and the other tree would be maybe on the other side of. The station lane where it cuts through the civic center. It's not entirely clear from the photographs, but I, I definitely think one should be a value. That's it.
So where are we? I'm sorry.
We're on council, we're on council discussion. We closed public comments and Diana had her hand up next.
Okay, Diana.
I wanted to agree with everything Rick said and what everyone else said that alternative two and the one. Kind of question comment I have that's my concern is how big are the, the hedge that we're putting in? If you're putting the hedge in and you have a wire fence behind it. And you're putting little ones in, it's going to be really open for a, a long time. So my question is how big are those? How much coverage are we going to get? Should we consider doing an IV? On that link chain link fence, because it sound like it's going to be at least five years before we have any coverage. From that hedge. I could be wrong on that, but that may, I just wanted to throw it out to be conscious that it, because it's not all. Wood, they said it was linked fence and only, the only part of this wood is the gate. So until that hedge goes in, it might be really open.
Yeah.
I, I would say. Good, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ben.
I, I would say just to answer that, that concern that. I think an, an IV specifically, we typically avoid that because it's an invasive and. With all of the native planting we're doing around here, that's, you know, generally not aggressive. Plant material. It would just get kind of outcompeted by the IV. The point that the IV would be everywhere. The wax myrtle, you know, we, we would recommend kind of five gallon minimum size. You could go up to fifteen gallon if you wanted a bigger. Day one plant. It's obviously a cost, cost difference in that, but. I think that even with the five gallon planted at the right time of year and. Give it one growing season, it'll be six feet high already. So it, it grows very quickly and. You know, I think by, by three years, it'll probably be ten feet. Five years is like twenty feet. So. You will have screening pretty quickly. It's just, you know, going to start out more around like. Head height. So when you're walking down the street, you won't necessarily see through. If you're up in the second story of your house, yeah, you'll see over it in the first few years, but eventually like. I think long term, it's going to do a lot more than, than an IV, because the IV won't, will only ever get as high as the fence. Whereas the wax myrtle is going to get twenty, thirty feet high, however, how you want to let it.
Councilmember Widmer, I know you have your hand raised, but I want to make a comment, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm sorry for my internet difficulties, but. I, I'd like to just kind of take this up a notch. We're getting quite granular here. In this council meeting, I think the objective that we want to achieve. And what we are hearing from the neighbors is that we want it to be screened. We want the driveway entrance. I, I kind of came in, I don't know where we are about the location of the gate. I think that's the. First thing that we need to make a decision on about whether or not we are going to direct staff to. Get a cost on relocating the location of the gate. So that it's not kitty corner or, or facing into maple lane, but more facing directly at. Station lane. Can I just kind of bring the conversation back to that one specific point right now?
Sure.
Okay.
So I, I, I'm in agreement that it needs to be on station lane. Most of the residents. Did ask that it be closest to the railroad tracks. So I'm, I'm in agreement on, on that.
Okay, so council member DeGoya, you have your hand raised. You want to make a comment on this one specific item here?
We're off the call. We have all agreed that it should be closer to the railroad tracks where it's proposed.
Great. Thank you very, very much. Secondly, then what I think that what we need to do. We can sit here and we can debate planting materials all night long. And with a committee of five and a, a, a room full of residents, everyone has their own favorites and this and that. But I want to get consensus from council that we need to. But I want to get consensus from council that we need to direct staff to screen this as aggressively as we possibly can. And to that point, I would like to create an ad hoc subcommittee that will work through all of these issues that we're talking about now, whether or not it we get you know, the wax myrtle or the the magnolia. What kind of planting materials is going to be best to go through that and then bring that back to council? But I think what we need to do is take it away from this public discussion as a as a group thing and and choosing plant materials at this time.
If I may, I think all the residents, for the most part, said that they would like to have the alternative too. And I think that most of the council, including my and I and I'll add my name to it too.
Understand.
Said picked the alternative to which was the wax myrtle. So I think we're there.
Yes, right. And yeah, and then there's other plantings around. I think that the all of the plantings all the plant materials of the civic center, we need to revisit that because when the plant landscape planting was was approved a long time ago, it was at the end of the process and you know, I I know that we've approved a landscape plan and things are already being infrastructureed, if you will, according to that plan. But as we are seeing here now, some of the planting materials may, there may be room for a new suggestion, a better suggestion. And I would like to have that opportunity to do that. And I see council member Degoya has his hand raised.
Yeah, I I'm unmuted. Yeah, I think that Bill is right. It sounds like everyone's in agreement to go with option two as we discuss. I I support your idea of a subcommittee. I think that this has raised the issue of plant material and in general, somebody needs to look at the plant material. So we don't have a repeat of the problem that we encountered here. So I strongly support your suggestion for the entire civic center. Not everything that's going in there, though. The irrigation, I think, is being done now. But just what the plants are, that makes sense. Thank you.
I just think a second, a second look at it is is called for at this point. So I'm I'm not ready to kind of make that appointment at this time, but I will and I will get with city manager and then I'll create an ad hoc subcommittee of myself and one other council member. And then we'll, you know, have that ad hoc where we can also have resident input at at the same time if we want to hold an open meeting. I've got city manager raising his hand and looking like he's going to fuss at me.
Not not to fuss at you, just just to advise that we are very far down the process.
I understand.
There are and there are some fairly significant lead times associated with planting materials that have already been secured by the contractor. So.
And when you. Planting material, excuse me, when you say planting materials, you mean actual plants in pots that you're ready to put into the ground?
There there may be trees that have been purchased. I don't think smaller ones have. I don't know the exact details. What I would suggest is that before we start making modifications and doing that sort of stuff, that we have a clear understanding of what has or has not been purchased or or beyond site or storage for the purchase so that we're not so that we're we're knowing what the ramifications are of changes.
City manager not going to step on on toes and, you know, reinvent the wheel or anything like that. I just, you know, I think that it's really important. And this exercise here has kind of shown us how important it is. Okay, are we ready to go on? Are we finished with this item? We're on agreement.
Staff has direction that it's alternative number two, moving the gate, trying for the redwood selection along the frontage, using Pacific Wax Myrtle, layering those and looking at the coast live oak as a as a evergreen tree as opposed to a deciduous tree.
Okay.
Well, no, I think that actually, we were talking about a valley oak. Especially if there's two trees. And I I don't think the tree is going to screen anything, but.
Oh, I understand. I got it.
Yeah, the valley oak is to replenish what we're losing. Okay, and there's ways to get.
You're muting yourself, Elizabeth. We can't hear you.
Yeah, you're you're muted, Elizabeth. She's having trouble.
Can you not hear me?
Now we can hear you.
Okay, alright. I have to I have to go find my agenda packet. I'm walking around the house trying to, you know, hold on.
We're going to fifteen.
We're 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 still on, we're still on fourteen. There's a couple of items left in fourteen.
Sorry, sorry about that.
Ben, you can go ahead and stop your your screen share there. We'll go back to normal.
Oh, that's right. It's the fountains.
Yep. So the 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 second item, I believe, is the direction on the city hall fountain selection. The fountain subcommittee did look at some alternative fountain designs, larger fountain designs after the council feedback for the space on the fair oak side of the city hall building. In the staff report, you have three fountain suggestions, figure number five, four and six. Three different varieties of the fountains. Those are bigger wall fountains that would go against the the wall immediately adjacent to the police department parking lot entry. That space is probably close to ten to twelve feet wide. It's a square space, not any of the arched spaces that are that are adjacent to it. So what staff's looking for is feedback on which of these alternatives might work. Also of note, as you know, the library fountain is named, it's named by and purchased by Steve Do Star. So it's got a plaque associated with it. This fountain is is a donor recognized fountain, but the name is anonymous. And at this point, we don't know who it is. We don't have any details and it could be just anonymous in terms of the of the name on it as well. We just don't know. So I don't know what the timing urgency is of this one. If the council needs some additional time with this one, we can certainly take that time, I suspect. But it's up to you guys. We're looking for direction.
All right, open it up to council for comments on the three new alternatives and trying and I know council member Hawkins Manwellian had a comment that I think is very relevant and I'd like her to share that.
I don't know which one you're referring to. I had I had a lot of them.
No, about the fountains, about the scale, about being visualized, right?
One of the things I think would be really for help helpful for everyone if we were to take the front of the building and show the scale of it. Because looking at these and they're in feet, so I had to go and get my calculator out and they're about half the size. So if you look at the, George, can you put, is it possible to put up the picture of the front of the building? Where I'm trying to go with this is that the front of the building has arches on the left. Yes, the area we're going in is a square, but the aesthetic of the whole building is arches. And so when you take and you put a little tiny arch that's half the size, we need to be aware that we're doing that. You see what I'm saying? In the middle of the building, you have these arches. This spot over here really should kind of, if you have something that's, let's say it's up to the second line there. It's it's pretty small and it and then the next question is how wide is it? Is it a very vertical arch? Or is it a more graceful arch like the ones we have here? So for me, I think it'd be easier for us to make this decision if someone just literally drew this the aspect ratio of what we're seeing in the spot. And the second thing that came up was that the planting around that we already were just having this conversation. We have to revisit some of the planning. When you look at the way the planting is, there's not planting kind of accounting for this thing there either. So we may have to revisit that as well.
And it may just be sitting on the on the level of the walkway. So council member Degoya, you have your hand raised. You want to make a comment about the fountains?
Yeah, I'll make a comment about the fountains. So if you look at the images that we have in front of us, there's four fountains. One of which is identified as terracotta moss, which was determined to be too small. Of the other two, I like the first and the third ones the best. Twelve thirty five and eleven sixty six. And I know that twelve thirty five is, and they're both about the same height. They're both approximately six feet high. And which which is going to get you up to, I think, above that second line that Diana was identifying. And the one on the right, eleven sixty six is slightly wider. It's sixty three inches wide versus fifty two inches wide. So.
Could someone put them up so we see what you're talking about?
They're in the staff report.
I know, but there's there may be people who want to see what we're talking about that don't have the staff report in front of them.
It's online if they have, yeah. But, okay.
I'm I'm opining that fountains twelve thirty five and eleven sixty six, I think, are much more interesting than eleven sixty three. And if you want what appears to be slightly more vertical, I think that twelve thirty five would be better. And if you want one that appears to be slightly more horizontal than eleven sixty six would be better. And both of them are approximately half the width of that wall. So they will be quite substantial on that wall.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Widmer, you have a comment.
I I just want to point out one other thing. I just want to note that at least in the images that were provided here that that one is much lighter colored. It would be the same color as the wall. Whereas the one, that's the one on the left, twelve thirty five, whereas eleven sixty six is darker. It would stand out more because of the color difference.
You know, okay, all right. It's hard to tell. Go ahead.
Yeah, sure. No problem. So, you know, Rick and I discussed this thing, you know, obviously, we're in agreement. I I think due to the the arches, I I think eleven sixty six might be the best one because it is the widest. But the other one, I thought it was very attractive as well. That's why we identified it. So.
Thank you. You know, okay, so here's my opinion and I haven't had a chance yet to give my opinion. And then.
I have a question. The eleven sixty six is the new bronze and is the other one the chateau? Because I wrote down the names, not the numbers. So is eleven sixty six the new bronze?
No, eleven sixty six is called.
Portinis.
Okay.
The other one is called Chateau Wall.
So it's a square top. At least I know what you're talking about. Sorry about that. I didn't.
Okay, here's my opinion. We're looking at little pictures here. We don't have the scale. We don't have the scope and we're making assumptions that that, you know, the darker color one is going to look better on the lighter color wall, the lighter color one. It's I don't think this is time sensitive as city manager, you know, just said to us right now. And there has to be more selection than this. We're giving, we've been given, it's like, you know, in a magic trick, you know, you get cards and you got to pick the one that you're being forced to pick on. And it's just not, it it I don't like the process. I don't like what we're being given. I don't like how it's being presented. I don't like the fact that, you know, the one that I guess Rick likes is the the darker color. I don't know. To me, it looks short and squatty and maybe it's big and grand and it would, you know, fill that wall. The other one, the chateau, looks very French and then the other one looks really Italian-esque, which is not, you know, something and rocco. So I I don't know. I just, I think that we need to, you know, table this decision right here, right now. And, you know, wait until we get, you know, some other perspectives. I don't know. Are these the only choices that the ad hoc committee came up with?
We went through, we went through a lot. We 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 looked at that a catalog of these things. Now, but the catalog was given to us by Marty and maybe, you know, he tempered it based on on the catalog and we need another catalog, but but we did look at a lot of them, really.
I think that we, I, you know, a site visit to some where some of this, anybody want to go to Italy right now? No. City manager.
Sylvester does have a showroom up in San Francisco. You you can get a good look and feel for them there. But there you have the option of pre-built fountains, which are a lot less expensive. Actually constructed ones. The ones that were actually constructed was like twenty five to thirty thousand dollars. Fountain itself, which you didn't want to go with and that was the direction. That's how we ended up with this catalog.
So you know, just picking and choosing from a catalog, you know, a site visit, you know, Bill, how important it is go and, you know, kick the tire a little bit. So can I just make, you know, in the interest of time and going, you know, making progress here? Even though I don't want to make a decision on this, I I just don't feel comfortable about any of them.
Mayor. Mayor, this Marty Heneman. Hi, good evening. I'd be happy to set up a tour of the Sylvesteri area and all the all the wall phones they have for either subcommittee or whoever mayor you'd like to see have that so you can actually touch and feel and see how big these are and how they might blend in with the side of the the city hall wall over there. And that's probably the best way to come to some kind of discuss discussion or decision of what fountain the council wants to have is actually do a site visit. So I I'd be happy to set that up if you'd like.
Yeah, and I think that we should take a look at what the existing condition appears to be becoming because, you know, the the building is pretty well up and, you know, it's kind of stuckoed. And, you know, the ramp or the pathway. And then Diana brings up a good point about, you know, what kind of shrubbery are we going to be putting around it or 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 are we? Is it going to be just sitting flat on this? You know, pathway. So that's that's my desires. Can I get consensus from council to kind of?
I think it's a good suggestion to have a site visit. Marty, I think it would be terrific if you would set up a site visit for us. And and we'll go up there when you set it up. I I I think it's a good suggestion. I I thought that the recommendations that you made and they were quite a large number thing of of different fountains that we looked at were good, but I agree that a site visit would be appropriate.
And and Marty, if I could, if I could amend that when we go up there, if we could have maybe a backdrop of what are the stucco, the color of the stucco, so we can put it behind it and see what the what the transition looks like.
Yeah, we'll see if we can come up with some kind of mockup. And then also, as the mayor mentioned, what kind of landscaping is going to be in front of there? If it's going to be ground cover, things like that. So you have a complete picture when you're looking at these fountains over there.
Right, right. And we can take a picture of it and then we can maybe put it on the drawing for everybody else to see. Okay.
Is it the subcommittee that's taking this tour?
Well, you know, I'd like to go myself. I mean, I don't need to go with any friend or foe or, you know, whatever.
If you want to take my place on the subcommittee, I'm happy to let you have it.
Thank you. And Diana, can we do that?
There can only be two people on the subcommittee, okay?
You guys and then.
If you want to disband us and you you and Diana go do it, go ahead. Be my guest.
I think I think Councilmember Degoya is having a little heart attack.
You want to be involved in everything. Why don't you just make all the decisions?
No, I don't want to be involved in everything.
You actually do.
No, I don't. Anyway.
Let us know what you want to do.
We're both willing to resign and you can take it on.
Well, I think Diana and I could maybe just bring another perspective.
Okay, fine. That's fine. I I resigned from the. Okay, fine. That's fine. I, I resigned from the committee, so you could put a replacement in.
Okay. Is that done?
The last, the last city council last year, there was a huge controversy about whether America disbanded a subcommittee. I actually think it's the appropriate thing to do. But the member of the council who was most vociferous in opposition to the mayor being able to do that is not present.
Well, I'm not disbanding. I'm asking for your resignations. I mean, this is a little fountain, some committee. Let's, you know, you're not going to be around next week.
I couldn't, well, whatever. Oh, I'm happy for you to take it on.
Well, I wouldn't take it on myself. I would.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Perhaps you could leave the subcommittee as is. They still have some additional work to do on other areas.
Yes.
They're the donor recognition subcommittee, not just the fountain subcommittee.
Okay, sure.
Perhaps, perhaps Marty can make, and staff could make two trips. One with Bill and Rick to view the fountain and see it, and one with Diana and Elizabeth to do the same thing. Two separate trips, two separate visits, so that when you all come back to the council, you have the same perspective, but you haven't.
I'm, I'm happy to just take their perspective. It seems to be an issue. So I, I, I'm happy to just let them take the perspective. Okay, let's move on.
No, but everybody would get to have a vote on it in the end.
I'm going to take whatever you say. No problem. Just make a recommendation. Let's move on.
Thank you.
I'm not feeling well. Let's move on.
The last, the last item, Madam Mayor and members of the council, item number fourteen, is some feedback with respect to tree one oh nine and one ten. Uh, tree one oh nine, as you know, is leaning over the roadway and needs to be removed. Uh, the concern was if removed completely, tree one oh nine, we'd have to remove tree one ten as well because the roots are intertwined. Uh, so the arborists, uh, or it was suggested that perhaps we could just uh, cut down one oh nine um, to the stump level at a certain height, uh, and then retain it. So we wouldn't have to remove one ten. The arborist said that could be done. Uh, she would recommend a three-foot and then monitoring it so that the decay has time before it hits one ten. Uh, but if it wants to be, if we want it to be lower, we can do that as well. It just may need to be monitored more frequently.
Okay, thank you. Any member of the council have a comment on this? I do see a member of the public who hasn't, her hand raised. I think I'll take, uh, Betsy, would you like to make your comment now?
Yes, um, I would, I can see that one oh nine is leaning and needs to be taken out. But I'm hoping that it can be cut at grade and that we can keep the tree one ten. Uh, I would like to save as many as we can. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Any other member of the public, any member of the council have a comment about this?
No other members of the public, mayor.
Okay. Um, so, you know, tree one oh nine is, is clearly um, leaning. And I understand the uh, arborist feeling that, you know, the roots are intertwined because they're so closely uh, growing together. Um, so, uh, but if we can cut it down at grade as much as possible, I don't know what her uh, reasoning is uh, for leaving it at three feet. But I think a three-foot stump would be unsightly and not uh, not very attractive. Um, if we have to cut them down, again, I really, I've seen this happening where you can replant very large uh, specimens. And uh, there are companies out there that do that. It's expensive. But I think we could raise some financial donations for this type of uh, new tree planting uh, and get donors. But uh, so uh, ta, during any other direction from any other council member about the uh, the taking down of tree one oh nine?
I think we should take it down. It was very clear. We need to take it down.
Okay. Does Councilmember DeGoya, uh, go home? Is he there?
Here.
Okay. Do you have a comment about that?
No.
Okay.
I'm willing to do whatever you and Diana want to do.
Yep.
Okay. Diana, what do you think about that tree?
I agree with what Betsy said. If we could uh, try to save at least one of them, would be great. Save as many trees as we can.
Absolutely. Okay. City manager, I think you've got.
Cut one oh nine down to add grade as much as possible, save one ten. Got it.
Good, okay.
That concludes item fourteen.
So moving on to item fifteen is the request for proposal for the donor recognition wall design, construction, installation. I'm going to turn this over to city manager and our um, committee member who's managing this, which is not me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The RFP and the contract were prepared by the city attorney and myself. Uh, and then Diana provided as the council liaison feedback on some of the narrative within the overview and, and a lot of the narrative within exhibit A. Uh, if the council could provide additional feedback, we would welcome that on exhibit A. Uh, the timeline is a bit tight, so we'd like to get this out on the street as soon as possible.
Okay. Any member of the council, uh, Councilmember Widmer, you have your hands raised.
I have a comment, not, not a, not a question.
Okay, anybody have questions about this? Any member of the public? Okay, Councilmember Widmer, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, I think that when Rick and I Brett brought this forward, we said that, you know, the Atherton uh, taxpayers would be the largest plaque. And then it would go down further and further. Each, each subs- subsequent level would be, the, the type set would be somewhat smaller than the one above it, but larger than the one below it. And, and the size of the plaque would be similarly sized. And I don't see really, you know, the, the St. Charles kind of does that, but that's kind of a hodgepodge. Uh, the, uh, the alumni house doesn't do that at all. Uh, there's a little bit of that over in the Palo Alto uh, ones. So, you know, I, I, I can't see that we throw all these different versions in there. And I spoke to the city manager about it, and they'll be able to pick what they want and bring it back. And it won't be what we, what we specified. So the, the RFP should show what we specified and what we presented to the council. And you guys didn't have a comment on it. So, so I think that it needs to be a little clear.
Okay.
That's my comment and that's it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Rick, do you want to make a comment about this?
Uh, I agree with what Bill said. I, I think that uh, the sizing uh, difference should be included in the RFP. Uh, I did have a question uh, about the RFP. The RFP states that the acceptable material types would include bronze, stone, etched glass, and metal. I don't understand metal. I mean, bronze is obviously metal. So uh, it, that is included, but what, so that would imply that any kind of metal would be okay, which I don't think is right.
Okay. Good. Uh, Councilmember Hawkins?
I just, what, what, how we came up with those, or when we looked through all the many, many pictures, those were the materials that people agreed to at our last meeting. So that's why those were called out specifically. What's not is examples of each of those. And we could not find one that had the exact configuration we were talking about. I think uh, to Bill's question, we can clearly add words that are more defined, that call out the size difference. I think it's implied, but we, we can make it more explicit. And the, the only reason metal was there is that was one of the materials that we all talked about. And there were some that we approved that aren't uh, in that list of pictures.
Okay, um.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Well, what is the material in the St. Charles Baromo Church? Because that's, that's the only one that clearly uh, goes, changes uh, font size based on category.
Right. We did, there, there didn't exist exactly what we wanted in examples. And if you remember, we looked at many, many examples last time. And um, so we were just putting those, we could put more examples in to help guide the, the vendors.
I think it's enough examples, but what, I, I think I'd take out the word metal. It's, it's too vague.
Okay.
I'm okay if it's just bronze, stone or, stone or etched glass. I'm kind of worried that we don't give enough direction in the RFP.
Yeah.
And, and uh, that we can see things all over the map. So my recommendation would be to remove metal and to include what Bill stated about the different sizing at each of these different levels. And then I, then I have a question, which is a big question. The RFP is for design, construction, and installation. And I just wonder if that means we're going to cut out some good design because the designer isn't capable of both construction and installation. Um, and at a minimum, I think that we should, and maybe we feel, given the timing, that we have to have design, construction, and installation. But at a minimum, I think that we should be clear that the response to the RFP could be from a designer and an installer. They don't have to be the same person. Uh, but so let me start with the question about whether it's necessary to have design, construct, and install all in one.
Okay, I think that our city attorney may have an opinion about that.
I do. Um, thank you. So the state law has prohibit, prohibited uh, municipalities to have the designer also construct a public work unless it's in excess of one million dollars for a specific type of project. So by statute, we are prohibited from doing that. So this was a creative solution to allow kind of a one fell swoop design, install, and constru- or construction and installation of the donor wall by looking at it through the purveyance of a, a work of art.
Right. Well, I, I think it's great to have it be a work of art. But does that mean that, that we couldn't be doing an RFP for a design? And then once we have the design, do an RFP for the installation?
That's correct. Unfortunately, we're, we're somewhat.
Well, I think then at a minimum, we should make it very clear in this RFP that this could be responded to uh, by a team uh, which includes a designer and, and then, you know, construction installer uh, partnering together.
We can do that.
Okay, good point. Um.
I, I, excuse me, I, I had one other point, which is there's a couple of places where, uh, for example, on, on page six of thirty-three, the, the second page of the attachment, where we refer to Axer, Atherton taxpayer, both in the paragraph and in the bullet points. And I think it should be plural.
Oh, yeah. Atherton taxpayers?
Correct.
Okay, um, yeah, this is tricky. This is really, really tricky. Because I don't think we're giving, in this RFP, enough definition, enough real kind of direction and stuff. And, and you know, we've, um, in the staff report, we've got the first page of one of thirty-three, you know, the little diagram of the arched uh, environment that we are, you know, really confined. It, it's been that way since the beginning with WRNS. And it's not a very friendly uh, environment, I think, to create this donor wall, especially if you're going to have, you know, rectangle squares, large ones, or, you know, smaller uh, gradient down uh, or because you've got the curved in the top and everything. The other thing uh, that it says, so right now, it looks to me like including the um, Atherton taxpayers um, indication, which would be the biggest. And at the top, um, there are fifty to fifty-one uh, donors to recognize on this wall. And um, you know, so it, that has to be taken consideration and the uh, sizing. But then we're also saying that we want to uh, have room to add uh, donors, you know. So are we going to design in, um, instead of just three one million dollar sizes and the big names, you know, two more? So we have five, just in case somebody, you know, comes up and gives us a million dollars or something. And then, you know, has that, so that all has to be kind of, I think, thought through a little bit on that. And um, yeah, and then what do you do about the curves and those little extra areas where the rectangle squares don't quite fit? So it's, it's a challenge. Uh, Rick, you know, um, Councilmember Widmer has his hand up. And so uh, we'll call on you right after that. Bill? You're muted, hon.
Yeah, I got it. I got it. I, I think that the concept was that, you know, like the top ones, whereas those Atherton taxpayers, the edges would be curved i- i- in accordance with the curvature of the space. And so, yeah.
Fill that whole top section.
Yeah.
Fill that whole top section.
But it would, yeah, I, I, I think that's exactly right.
And then I think that the, the second thing is, first off, these are the tax, these are the donors who made the donation to pay. If somebody wants to donate afterwards, well, then they're not going to get on the donor wall. Okay, so I don't think we need to save any space.
That's why.
Well, I don't think it, I don't think, I'm giving you my opinion, okay? It's my opinion. I'm allowed to give you my opinion. Okay?
I agree with you.
This is, this is people who have donated to make this thing happen. If they want to donate more money later, they can get a brick. Okay?
Or a name on a street.
Yeah, exactly. Or we can put a plaque up somewhere else, but they, they weren't the original donors.
Understand. So, okay, so we may, just following your line of uh, uh, discussion. That's why I brought it up, because in the RFP, it says, you know, with room for, to add more donors. So if we've got, you know, these fifty to fifty-one individual donors that have been identified here, that's going to fill this.
That, that, that's the space. Yes. So, so that should be struck, stricken, stricken from the RFP. Now, I don't know who wrote the RFP. You know, I know that we had a committee that put this stuff together and then Diana got involved in it. You know, I don't really know exactly where we are on the thing. But you know, what Rick and I gave you was kind of where we were. Okay, that's how I feel. Okay, we're going to, we continue to look over stuff that we've already made decisions on. It really is frustrating.
I understand. I'm frustrated also. So I, I don't, city manager, can I call on Diana first? Okay, Diana, you had your hand up.
I, I agree with not letting new people come in. I think that's a great thing, the more we limit it. And one of the other problems we have is, as we sit here, we don't have exact numbers. So I would caution everyone from designing the thing to the nth degree, because we don't actually know how many we have till we have that list of actual people. I've seen.
We have the numbers, Diana. They've given them to us.
They gave you numbers and they gave me different numbers, Bill.
They gave George numbers, okay? I gave George the numbers they gave us. So that's it.
I'm just saying that once you do it in, in stone, literally, you have to make sure you have the actual numbers. And I have now seen three sets of numbers coming from the same people. So that, that's part of the caveat. And the other thing I would say is that I think that your point that we should make clear that the different sizes should denote, should denote how much people donated. I totally agree with that. But I don't think we should sit here as a team and design it, let the designers come back with some ideas.
Right. Uh, Councilmember DeGoya, and then I know that George wants to say something.
So a, a couple of things. What Bill said is what I was originally going to say, that the Atherton taxpayers could have the corners curved. I think that suggestion as an option would be good to include in the RFP. Uh, I, and, and I think that the RFP is troubling because it doesn't give enough specific direction. I, I think that we should include the image that's in the staff report of the curved uh, wall in the RFP. And it's not currently in the RFP.
It is.
And that's our environment.
Oh, then I didn't see it in the RFP. But, okay, if it's in the RFP, that's good enough. Uh, and then on, I, I, I disagree with Bill on the issue of whether we should allow for additional people. I think we all think there's not going to be much in terms of additional people. But if somebody comes in with a donation, uh, you know, by the time. you know, by the time we open it, I mean, not obviously not the day before we open it, but within time, if we can add them to the wall, I think we should add them to a wall. We shouldn't be inflexible about that. I don't have any illusion because we don't know of anybody that's sitting out there. And but I I also think, you know, if if somebody gives their money, then we should give them some recognition.
Yeah. So so honestly, I have seen donor walls that have blank bricks, you know, blank pieces of stone, you know, scattered throughout their gradation. But I don't think that, and I just don't know how many we want to try to plan for in this environment. It's not.
I don't think we should plan for it because, look, we've been overly optimistic that there's gonna be donors prior to this date. So I I think we should just move on and get the thing. I I'd like to go out and get it done and and see what we can get. Hopefully, we'll get responses to the RFP. That's the thing I'm the most worried about.
Yeah. So, okay. I is the direction enough, the city manager, that we need to clean up the RFP and make it a little bit more straightforward and, you know, some definition?
I know, I I have, the direction I've got so far is include information about lowering the size and dimension of the recognition as you go down the list. Atherton taxpayers, Atherton taxpayers, remove metal. Make sure project teams can actually apply or respond to the RFP and no new expansion tile opportunities or recognition opportunities within the design. But just a note to echo what Diana said, we are asking for an artist and an artist design team to design a piece of art. That's what we're calling this donor wall. It's an iterative process. The RFP is designed to get the artists to come in, put together an initial take. There's gonna be a sit down and an iterative process of that design. So there'll be an opportunity to comment and design it as we go along based on what the artist or design team submits.
Fine.
Sounds good.
Makes sense.
Okay, are we done with this item then?
Just need a recommendation or a motion for approval and release.
So moved.
Out of five.
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
DeGoya?
Yes.
Winmer?
Yep.
And Mayor Lewis?
Thank you, yes, okay. Okay, ad hoc subcommittee report on the legends.
I'm happy to introduce it, but this is a report from the Subcommittee Atherton Legends. And so you're gonna be talking about the proposal for the Atherton train station or other areas of the town site with respect to recognition criteria and selection of Atherton legends. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember DeGoya and Councilmember Hawkins-Manwellian for further comments.
Go ahead, Diana.
Way to put me on the spot. I'm assuming everyone's read it, the basic premises that we're taking the train station and we're gonna turn it into like a a location that will draw foot traffic to the town center. And we were proposing that in that train center, we take the building as it stands and try to change as little as possible. It's a mirrored image building, so we take the front opening right now faces a train track, so we'd flip that around. So it's facing, you'll see it right from the street as you come up and it will face the town center. And what would be inside there will be displays. And we're proposing that we include the history of the train station. And we have a lot of material already in our archives that we could use to do that. Also, the founding of the city perhaps, and then the legends. And the legends are our way of acknowledging people that have lived in Atherton. And we have proposed some ideas of what the categories could be. So the categories are up for discussion. And also, so do we actually approve of this approach? And the biggest, the hardest part is to figure out what the criteria would be and how we're gonna go about it. Are we gonna have the public involved in that? Will we be voting on it? So those are the kinds of things that we were left with.
Okay. Do you have anything to add, Councilmember DeGoya, on this?
No, I I think that was well said. I I do think that probably the toughest issue before us is the criteria for selecting the legends. And whether we do that, I assume we won't do it now, but whether you want the committee to propose criteria to the council for the council to decide the criteria for selecting the legends or whether you want to delegate it to some committee and whether that committee is an existing committee, whatever that may be, or a committee that is formed by the council. Exactly how that, what what's the mechanism?
Right, right.
And I I have a comment when we get to comments, but I I'll wait until you get there.
Councilmember Winmer, do you have a question or a comment on this?
I have a comment, so so I'm waiting for you to ask for comments to raise my hand.
All right. So I have a question about the, I understand that we're gonna essentially flip the opening of the train station, which I think is an excellent idea. But are you proposing that that opening have some type of door system, like a nano wall that can be closed at night for secure for security? Because I'm envisioning when we say we're gonna have memorabilia inside the little train station building, having to do with the train station, with maybe the history of Atherton and stuff. And and it, so that's my question. And how do you see that?
I would, the building itself is is little glass panels. So clearly, we could just make glass panels if they're not. I I don't remember if it had them on there already, but you would just fill in those with the exact same look and feel.
In a door system?
Yes, in a door, but use the same panes and the same thing because it's like a little glass building.
Right, 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 yes. And Councilmember DeGoya?
Yeah, I I agree with Diana, but be aware, it's not a secure building. And there there's a gap between the floor and the wall, all the way around the building. So there's not gonna be anything put in there that's a that's historic in nature, anything that would be historic, original items coming out of the Heritage Association would go into the large room in the historic town hall, not in the in the train station.
In in your judgment?
Well, you, I mean, if you're gonna put, if you're gonna put, and not just my judgment, in the in the Heritage Association's judgment, they're not gonna let things go into an unsecured environment. So.
That's what I'm saying, you know, if you're going to.
If if you want, if you want to make that a secured environment, you're gonna have to substantially change that station. And I don't think anyone is proposing that.
I, Diana?
There, there's also an exhibit case that's there that's original. I don't know how old it is, but that could be made into more of a secure for memorabilia. Well, I think we are proposing inside that would be more video displays, more like what you would see in a museum.
Exactly. I mean, that, so that was gonna be my follow on, you know, that is something that could be valuable, you know, if you've got a video display or whatever and, you know, taken away.
It's just a monitor.
Yeah, we have video cameras too, that the police can monitor directly from the police station.
There's gonna be a server with the data.
They're not watching it all the time. They're not watching all the video cameras. There's a zillion video, video cameras in dispatch.
Yeah.
They're not sitting there looking on just one, come on.
That's true, but it's not that expensive equipment we're talking about.
Okay, we're just conceptualizing, these are no decisions that we're making.
It's a monitor and with headphones and it is probably gonna be a sound system that has motion sensors. So turns on when you stand in front of it. But we we haven't picked the actual materials yet. But it'll be the kinds of things that are more indoor, outdoor, that are not, anything that's precious clearly has to be in the special kind of glass so that it doesn't fade. It's gotta be, yeah. So we we appreciate that anything that's a real object that is, you know, gonna be exposed to light, we'll have to deal with that properly.
I have another question. There are those, the benches that are in there. And those would remain? So or or not, I mean, what's your thought on that?
Well, I think that it has yet to be designed and it can't be designed by committee. And one of the things we have to do is figure out what's historic and what's not. Like, right now, we have that Atherton sign with the jaggy stuff on the side. And like, is that historic? Is that not historic? Are those benches historic or were they?
Yes, they are, yes.
I'm fine with keeping them myself, I think, you know. So this will be part of the design process of, but the idea is that it's an indoor, outdoor space. It's opened up for the day and you can go in and go out and stroll in and out and sit and look at things. And they may be motion triggered. It may go to your phone so that you don't have to have headphones. It will go to your phone when you stand there and it'll tell you the story. So there's a lot of technologies that are out now that are for this and we'll have to research and pick which ones we want.
Okay. Okay, conceptually, so are are we finished with questions right now? Those are my, all my questions. Councilmember Winmer, you wanna make your comment?
Yeah, I I think that, I'll make sure, okay, you could hear me, yeah. I looked through the list of notable people. I'm not really sure, you know, how we got that list and I realized it was gonna be. But but, you know, I I, you know, there there's two things. First off, is somebody nationally recognized, like a Hall of Fame guy? Okay, I can see that. But what are these other people? Just because somebody is a billionaire, maybe they inherited the money. Why should they be listed here? What did they do for Atherton? You know, this is an Atherton Hall of Fame. It's not just, hey, you might have lived here for a half a half a day. Maybe you also got arrested for pedophile. You know, I mean, come on, we're, then we're gonna have to go research stuff. Let's pick people who are doing stuff for Atherton. I I know it sounds funny, but it's true. You know, so if we're gonna, you know, and it but they have to be somebody substantial. Okay, you know, the assistant basketball coach, whoop-de-doo of the of the Stanford. How, why don't we have the the full basketball coach? Well, because she lives on campus, you know, I mean, come on. So I I I questioned that and I think that you can have a committee. You can have a committee that can recognize people or whatever brings suggestions up. But I think staff and and the and the the council need to to vet it and and need to approve it, okay? It needs to be some sort of process, like we do for committees. And and I think that the the people should, my recommendation is they have to do something substantial. Either, like I said, be nationally recognized or have done something significant for the town of Atherton. There are a lot of people who've done stuff for Atherton, they're not even listed here.
Okay, Councilmember.
Excuse me, can I just answer the question?
Just a second. I think I think what we're, you're talking about and what you're bringing up is the 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 formation of the criteria. I mean, that's what you're, you mean, you've just kind of identified some of the criteria that you personally feel. And so the subcommittee, and Rick had brought that up at the very beginning, you know, should the subcommittee go back and, you know, create the criteria for vetting these, you know, legends to bring to us. And I think that's the first step to to make a process out of it. And the the list was, I was actually quite surprised to get the list, you know, in a public document like this, you know, because it hadn't been vetted. And, you know, when things are actually published like this, it's like, oh, my gosh, this is what we're really doing. So I was a little taken aback by that and that city manager allowed that to go into our agenda packet. It's quite extensive and, you know, obviously you made some thought of it, but we do need a really clear cut set of criteria and guideline.
Right.
Thank you.
Oh, that, good job, guys.
Can I answer the question about how we got the list? The the list, it it's kind of interesting. The list came off of Wikipedia. So it it's just whoever wrote Wikipedia. And then the, some of them came from Hollywood Reporter of, who are the famous people that live in Atherton? So it is extremely unscientific, but it was there, so we cut and pasted it. And a few of the names are ones that people had been talking about. So it it was, and I I was, I was reticent about putting the list too because it is a public document and it's somehow saying, we agree with this. I'd never heard of some of the people. But, yeah, no, it was just to give you an idea. It was not any sort of endorsement at all.
Councilmember DeGoya, you're.
Yeah, so I think that what is important for the council right now is to make a decision if you want the train center to include or if you want to consider further including in the train center something about legends of Atherton. In addition to the history of the train and some information on the history of Atherton. Those are very easy to incorporate into that train center. The legends, if we just, and the legend, the concept of the legends started with Atherton now as a as an idea to get people to donate to frankly, donate for conference rooms in the library that somebody could create a legends conference room. And then the council decided that maybe we should do a legends conference room. So that's why we're where we are. I I think that, my opinion is that we should have the history of Atherton and we should have some video display with images of the history of the train station and of Atherton, two separate items in that train station. I think I think the train station, it could be a great draw to people coming to the to the center and it's very open. I think the issue of including a display on the quote, legends of Atherton, end quote, is more troubling. And we need to hear from the council if you want us to continue to focus on that or not. So that that's an important decision. Let me just share some of my thoughts about it. The fact that we published this long list really bothers me. And and I I take responsibility for it, but once I really looked at the list, there's a lot of people that are current residents of Atherton. And do we want a public discussion of, well, does this person really qualify as a legend or not? Maybe he or she doesn't qualify and for what reason don't they qualify? Those, those discussions are pretty sensitive discussions. I I'm not particularly comfortable with that. I think at a minimum, if you want a legends of Atherton display, that we have to establish very clear criteria along the lines of what Bill was referencing. But, you know, there's other issues. How long should somebody have lived in Atherton? What what constitutes national or international recognition? There there are a whole bunch of issues that have to be considered in creating criteria. But if we do that, then we're gonna come back and we're gonna run, then somebody, either us or a committee we appoint, is gonna run through a whole list of humans that certainly includes this list that's in the attachment in the staff report. And we're gonna have to have a public debate about whether Mr. X or Ms. Y qualifies under that established criteria. I I'm not sure I want to do that. I I like the idea of legends of Atherton. I personally liked it better if somebody was gonna donate a half a million dollars or a million dollars and they would just tell us who they think the legends of Atherton are because it was their donation, but that didn't happen. So I I think that we need direction from the council about whether you want to continue to pursue this or you want to drop it.
Okay. We have a hand raised from a member of the public, Betsy.
Yeah, I would recommend dropping this idea. I think it's just asking for trouble. I would like to keep that area, you know, kind of neutral, focus on the history of Atherton, the train. I I don't want to get into controversy about who who is worthy of being recognized. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Betsy. It's very relevant. And so, you know, Rick, you really make a a great argument. You know, your comments hold a lot of importance. And I think that we should take a breath about it. I think the focus, personally, I've always felt that the focus of the train station should just be the history of the train station, history of Atherton, facts in Dean Atherton and, you know, just all of the richness that, you know, we have there. And then the legends, it was just gonna be like a interactive video display, kind of. Uh, and then the legends, it was just gonna be like a interactive video display kind of a thing, if, if, if anything at all. Um, and that may come at some other time and space, I mean, in another area but yet to be defined. But, um, for my position, I would like to just drop the legends concept and have the committee really, really thoughtfully focus on the restoration and the repurposing of the train station into a historic venue. For the train, for the history of Atherton. Okay?
I'm in favor of that.
Thank you. Thank you, Diana.
I actually think that, that, just to share with everyone, you know, we're only two years away from our 100th anniversary.
Yeah.
And focusing on the history of Atherton and promoting that in there could help us in terms of building up some excitement about that 100th anniversary. We did have fairly substantial parties and celebrations of the 50th, 60th, and 75th anniversaries of Atherton. Uh, to my knowledge, we haven't had one since that 75th.
I tried to have one for our 90th, but, you know, I couldn't get it done.
Yeah.
So. City manager wouldn't let me have it. Uh, Diana.
Yeah, thanks, Rick, for bringing that up cuz I had assumed you guys were all really in favor of the legends. And so it was only when you just said the history of how we got to it that, yeah, so I think this is the best decision.
It makes, it makes a lot, a lot of sense.
Good.
About any comments from our city attorney about this? Are we in the right, going down the right path here? And, uh, city manager? Yep, Mona?
Yes, I mean, at the end of the day, it's the discretion of the council, how you wish to do this. The only thing that we can't do is have any decision-making that's occurring, um, outside of, of the public forum, which is what I think Councilmember DeGoya was concerned about with, with talking about these openly, so.
Good.
Yeah, it's never been considered that we would make those decisions outside of the public forum. And, and I think, so I think the process has been very good. We've dealt with it publicly. I, I think it's the right decision.
Yes, I do too. City manager, you're muted. You're muted.
I was just gonna say, unless you wanted to make it recognition of your current city manager, I'm all for that.
He's a legend, he's a legend in his own time.
You put this list. Everybody was saying, why did you put this list in here? So I'm not sure you're the city manager anymore.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I.
The, the list is from a publicly accessible web Wikipedia. It's not anything that's already private.
I know, but come in.
But you published it.
So I think that, uh, we're finished with, uh, this, uh, item 16.
And I think, as a committee, we've got some direction to go back and look at the history of Atherton, the history of the train station, how to display that information.
And there's a lot, a lot. And, you know, look at the benches, Rory. There's a neighbor of mine who just accosted me about the benches and, you know, there's a lot of history about the benches. And I went over and I looked at him. Those are big benches, you know, and if we're gonna take them out, uh, we need to repurpose them someplace else in the, you know. But you guys talk about that. Thank you, Rick, and thank you, Diana, for your hard work on this. Okay, item number 17, the right turn on red restrictions for Middlefield and Oak Grove. Robert Ovadia, thank you for hanging in there with us.
Certainly, but I think the city manager's gonna do the brief.
Oh, come on.
I have a very brief.
All the thunder.
That was the, the, the ask. Uh, so the Transportation Committee, following the city council's direction at their March 19th meeting, uh, evaluated the speed limit along Middlefield Road and the intersection of Middlefield and Oak Grove. As part of that outfall, they recommended no change to the speed limit. But they did recommend that, based on feedback from Sergeant Metzger, which you can read in the staff report, that the right on red restrictions be changed to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM as opposed to their split times now just for consistency at all four corners of that intersection. So that's the recommendation that's before the council this evening.
Okay, thank. I, I think that the split times had originally corresponded to the, uh, when school was in session and when the kids were crossing the crosswalks, you know, in the morning and in the afternoon and stuff. So Councilmember Widmer has his hand raised.
Yeah, um, I, I didn't see anywhere in the discussion where there was a certain number of accidents that have occurred from here. We changed it back in 2015 at the request of the neighbors and the people, the, the residents that are driving through there. And to just change it back because Sergeant Metzger thinks that we should do it because basis some hypothetical thing. I, I just don't see that.
That's not, that's not what happened.
It, it, there, he, he said, well, because he think, you know, the school is growing and the kids cross over there and there's other activities. But it doesn't say that there's any acci- accidents that are, have occurred due to the fact that we've changed that to a different time.
Yeah, that wasn't what they requested of him. They requested the report that he provided. He's not, he's not directing that it be changed. He's just.
Well, I think we should have had some facts though, okay? If there, if there's been accidents there that have been directly related to the change in time, then, then I think that we should consider it. Else the council already decided, you know, five years ago.
Right. And so the, but the, in this case, he gave the report that the Transportation Committee wished for and they're providing a recommendation to the council. If the council doesn't want to do it, that's the purview of the council.
Okay, well, you got my opinion.
Do we have other opinions?
I have a question.
Oh, okay, yes.
So, uh, had the no left turn
on red?
requirement been, uh, 7:00 to 7:00 PM previously?
It's.
And it was changed at some point based on resident comment? That's what I understood from what Bill said.
It's no right turn on red. No right turn on red.
Right turn.
Yeah, no right turn on red from, from Middlefield onto Oak Grove.
So it used to be.
I think it's all four directions.
It's all four directions, all four directions.
Oh, okay.
So I, I think from my understanding of the staff report.
How can you turn right, left on red? You can't turn left on red.
It's no, no, no right turn from Middlefield onto Oak Grove and no right turn from Oak Grove onto Middlefield. All four directions.
All four directions.
All it's gonna do is create traffic.
That's what it currently is now.
Currently, my understanding is that currently there are time limited, no right turns in four directions. At two points of the day, in the morning and in the late afternoon.
Right.
And the proposal from the Transportation Committee is to make that effective for 12 hours from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The information that is new information to me, because I wasn't on the council when this was decided, is what Bill said, which i- if I understood what you said, Bill, is that it previously was a 12-hour no right turn and based on resident comment, it was changed to just morning and afternoon.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, well, if I can follow up that with a comment, I, I would say I'd really like to hear from the residents. I, I, I think then we should reach out to the residents and see if they have a strong opinion since they tried to change it once before. I don't want to have to make them go through the same effort again.
Yeah. And it needs to also be stated it's Monday through Friday, since the justification here, if you do change it, is speci- specified based on school hours.
So just to, um, provide a little bit, uh, more, so this item actually was driven by a member of the Transportation Committee in terms of asking that it be brought forward. It wasn't a suggestion by, by staff, either from Public Works or PD. There was just interest in revisiting, uh, the times and to get additional background. It is the, the feedback from PD is that, um, there are some site visibility issues in and around the intersection and the no turn on red is, uh, you know, beneficial in terms of, uh, public safety, particularly when there are students around. One of the concerns with regards to hours is that, as you know, over time and not infrequently, the school changes its hours. And so over the course of time, we set hours with whatever parameters and there are kids that are, say, students and others that are in and around the school, whether it's in a zero period or for after-school sports, et cetera. And so those were some of the considerations that Sergeant Metzger brought, uh, discussed with the Transportation Committee and the Transportation Committee discussed in their deliberations.
Well, I, I can, if I could, i- if I could make a comment on.
He'd jump in.
There is, there is a visibility problem coming off of Oak Grove. And, and be, and that's because the hedges have grown out in, i- i- in violation of the city ordinance. You need to have them cut back. So don't change the traffic patterns because the city is not enforcing their ordinances. It doesn't make any sense.
Okay, so I see that Chief McCully has joined us. Chief, would you like to add any, uh, comments, uh, about, um, this issue?
Let me get rid of my backlighting. I have a lighting problem. Much more mayor than what Robert Ovadia had stated. I think the input from Sergeant Metzger and from within the police department, which is an overall view of safety and consistency and from Sergeant Metzger's historical pers- perspective, which is why it was 7:00 to 7:00 PM at the time.
Uh-huh, uh-huh. So, um, I think some of the confusion is that, you know, people have to look and say, oh, is it seven to, is it, you know, time, can I do this? And, uh, there is other, uh, um, strains of thought that we should just make no right turn on red in that intersection at all, you know, just, just as a blanket, uh, uh, rule of thumb because then there's no confusion. You just know that you're not, you don't have the right because of the current dangerous situ- you know, the congestion in that area that you can have a right turn on red. Would that create more traffic, uh, backup? Yes?
It could. I mean, it could. I think the whole idea was Monday through Friday, when you're looking at congestion, um, from 7:00 to 7:00, they're just keeping it consistent.
But, but if you see the traffic pattern on Middlefield, from 5:00 to 7:00, it is absolutely chock-a-block.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, a- and at least there's some relief when people are turning to go down Oak Grove to go to the train station or to go to downtown Menlo Park. You know, if we're gonna do this because, hey, traffic patterns, then why don't we just do it on every bloody street? Why pick on this street?
Well, I think the reason we pick on that street is because of the school en- environment and the amount of kids that ride their bikes and walk.
I got it, I got it. But do it on Ravenswood as well.
But.
Ravenswood is right around that school.
I, I'm sure that the issue with the residents isn't a safety issue, it's a convenience issue. They don't wanna have to stop at the red when there's nobody coming. They want to be able to turn right at the red. So I would, I would feel that way. If I lived there, I can understand that concern. If we have a recommendation to change it to go back to the 12-hour period, and I understand, yes, it's more consistent and so you understand what it is, but if you live in the neighborhood, you understand what the rules are in the streets around you. And if the, if the residents would feel burdened by having to not turn right when, because they have an analysis that it's not necessary, I'd like to hear from them. I, I, I don't think we should just make that decision without having reached out to them.
And, Chief, do you know if we've had any kind of public outreach, uh, other than the discussion at the Transportation Committee?
No, we have not.
Diana?
I have, I have two questions. One, what is the price that we're talking about? And two, does our, our committee, do they do traffic studies? Do we have any science behind this? Or is it just driven by any neighborhood who wants to say something? I don't know. I, I don't know how the traffic committee works.
Yeah. Well, there's a police officer that is, you know, the liaison and, um, you know, council members who are on, um, the liaison. Uh, city manager?
Uh, yeah, there, there's, to answer the first question, all of this, price-wise, is just a change out of the sign, so that's not an exceptional price. But there, uh, in, as staff liaisons to the Transportation Committee is the police chief, the Public Works Director, who's an engineer, uh, and numerous police staff who are trained well in public and traffic safety. But then it is just a resident appointment, committee members who serve on the committee, just like on the city council, who are not necessarily subject matter experts providing their recommendations. So based on the council feedback this evening, we could certainly direct the Transportation Committee to conduct another public meeting at their level with specific outreach to the neighborhood to gain additional input and then return the item to the council if directed.
That's a good suggestion.
I agree. I think that's the appropriate way to handle this.
Are you gonna send a letter out to all the people and let them know about it?
Right, within the, you know, radius kind of of that intersection.
All right, okay, that's great. Because it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not just the three or four people that live there. And, and I, and I would recommend that you look at the Oak Grove, uh, as well as the, um, that Maple area where they're also pulling out. Look at, look at the visibility there and make sure that we're enforcing the ordinance. If that was the issue. City manager?
I don't know what the issue was. I wasn't at the meeting and I think it was led by, as, uh, Robert said, a member of the Transportation.
They said, they said it was visibility.
As one of.
Look at it. So go out and look at it.
Okay, all right. Is that enough direction on this item? Uh, we're not gonna make, uh, um, any decision on this. Uh, we're sending it back.
I think that's an excellent suggestion.
Okay, all right. Um, let's see.
That should be it.
I think, uh, we have, uh, I think that's it. Do we have any council, uh, reports or comments? Anybody make any announcements? Motion to adjourn?
So.
So moved.
There we go. Okay, thank you all. Hope you feel better, Bill.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
I'm sorry, me too. Let me get over here. My, my internet kind of healed itself.